Article 23. Town bylaws amendment to the noise bylaw. Ms. Brooks.
I'm moving terms of the article. This bylaw is written. The underlined words there will be removed and it also will help fine tune the existing bylaw in which we already operate. It will also allow the officers to go in and to give the initial warning. It eliminates the waiving of the warning and it doesn't, they will not be able, they won't lose any of their discretionary rights as if we eliminate these.
Yes. Can I keep this copy?
Cy Friedman, Precinct 10. I have an amendment. In the sentence, "Each such act," which begins "each such act," I would like to amend that sentence by deleting the words "more than one half hour" and not deleting the words[112.53][112.53]"of a." It would then read, "Each such act which either continues or is repeated after issuance of a warning, of a written notice of violation of this bylaw shall be a separate offense and shall be prosecuted as a separate offense."
Is there a second? Did I hear a second? Yes. Do you wish to speak to this?
Yes. To get out the easy part first, the addition of the words "of a" is just technical, but otherwise after issuance written notice, I think just sounds, I'm not sure, it's not grammatically correct and it just sounds awkward. My primary purpose is to eliminate the more than one half hour waiting period. Back in September, there was a meeting at the bank center regarding complaints that various neighbors in many parts of towns had, and one of the things that was discussed was the noise bylaw. At that time, Chief Maya indicated that one of the problems with the enforcement of the noise bylaw was they would go, if they gave a warning, they then would have to wait at least a half hour before they could get back and issue a summons. And when these events happen, they're normally on busy nights. The police, the police that are on patrol at that point may not have a chance to get back. So what my amendment is proposing is that by eliminating that half hour waiting, if the noise does not quiet down, or if it quiets down and then 10 minutes later it starts up again, the police can then go back and issue the second summons, or if they've given a verbal warning at that point, go back and give the summons out. They do not have to wait for a half hour to pass. In effect, what we're saying is, is that if you're making noise and you get a summons or a warning, you don't have a half hour to quiet down. And that is basically the thrust of my amendment. Thank you.
Let me ask a question of the Select Board. The second part of Mr. Friedman's proposed amendment just asks that after it says "hour after issuance of a warning or other," that you remove the line from under "of a." If you would just accept that as a grammatical correction, we won't have to have that as part of the motion. Does that make sense to people? Okay. So the amendment then is to delete-
The words "more than one half hour."
Ms. Campbell.
I think Mr. Friedman and we are trying to accomplish basically the same thing, but I'm not sure that removing the phrase "more than one half hour" is really going to do it. The problem isn't that the police can't come back in half an hour, it's that they can't come back that night. If you have three or four police cars in this town on a Friday or Saturday night and you have several dozen parties, the chances of them actually getting back to any one of them are very slight. They also don't have time to stand around for 40 minutes, and in any event, I think if they're standing there, the noise is going to subside and then maybe after they leave, it will reassert itself, but again, they're not going to have time to come back. The point of removing the idea of the warning as a mandate in the law was so that if the party is such that it's clearly out of hand, they don't have to issue a warning and come back at all. The issue is not the half hour, the issue is the ability to come back. If the party is such that when the police arrive and say the neighbors are complaining, people say, "Oh, we're sorry," and they shut down the noise, then there needs to be no further action, assuming that it stays shut down.
Yes.
I'm concerned by a couple of things with this. Seems to me the basic issue is here, here is whether it's worth taking away the possible infringement on people's rights, not legally infringement, but actually infringement by taking away the warning, whether that's worth it to them. And my question is, and I don't know who I direct this to, what exactly are these people being warned about? I mean, is it, can the police go to a house and just say, "Hey, you're being a little loud," or is there specific things that say the certain level of noise constitutes a violation? I really don't understand how the bylaw works, and that, I can't make my decision until I understand what we're taking the warning away for.
I can't, yeah. Captain Sherpa, why don't you come forward, please?
Madam Moderator. Charles Sherpa, Precinct 8, also a member of the Amherst Police Department. To answer the gentleman's question, you're not taking the discretionary power away from the police officer. The officer still may use discretion and not issue a violation. Does that answer?
Mr. Pearl, I'll recognize you again to clarify your question.
Yeah, well, my question is, is exactly, exactly what the section, I guess it might be Section 1 or Section 2 says about what a violation, what constitutes a violation?
A disturbance, a loud noise disturbance.
That's all said?
That's what the violation is, the bylaw addresses a noise disturbance. So when the officer arrives, he has to give a warning on the first offense. And what we're trying to do is eliminate the warning and letting him use that discretion. He may give a warning, a verbal warning, or he can give a written violation at that time.
Are you a town meeting member?
If the officer arrives at the scene of noise disturbance or whatever, does she or he determine at that point whether the noise is a disturbance then, or is it when someone calls up and calls the officer and says, "There's a lot of noise going on"? I mean, when is it determined an annoyance?
If the officer arrives and in his opinion or her opinion decides that it is not a disturbance, then he will not give a violation. He might warn the individuals in the property that there has been a complaint, and if he observes a violation, then it'd be up to him to give it. But if he does not observe that, then no, he cannot give a violation.
Questions? Yes.
I urge passage of this. Richard Gold, Precinct 2. I'm not sure whether the amendment is necessary, but the motion is very necessary in accordance with Mr. Pearl's concern. The way it's worked in the past is you have houses that tend to be party houses, they'll have a loud party, disturb every way, you wake up at 2:00 in the morning, the police come and give a warning and they quiet down. Fine. Next night or next week you do it all over again, well, you got to give another warning because you warned them yesterday, it doesn't matter, it starts all over again. It's not one warning per year or month, and that's where the problem comes in. So it's a wild party, you've already waken up everyone in the neighborhood, they deserve a fine for it. If I park in a meter and get a ticket, it's not a warning, it's a real ticket, I have to pay for it. If I don't inspect my car, I get a ticket, not a warning. If I speed, I get a ticket, not a warning. If you have a wild party, you set too much noise, you wake up everyone in the neighborhood, you should get a ticket for it.
Jennifer Wood, Precinct 3. I'm a student at the university and I think there is no real secret here that this is a problem with students. And so I'm really straightforward and address it as a student issue. The biggest problem, you know, is that students are not realizing that they're surrounded by townspeople, you know? And the way, but the way to change that is not to, is not to take away their warning and their right, because for the most part, when you go to students and you communicate with them that, "Look, there's townspeople living around you, there's children living around you," they become more receptive or calm.
Ms. Wood has the floor.
And that the way to deal with it, I mean, the warning does stand for 12 months. So if you have a house that's a party house and they get their warning on, you know, the first night, is that what it says? Am I mistaken?
Captain Sherpa. Excuse me. Captain Sherpa.
The way to look at this is, if you have a party on a Friday evening and the police respond, they respond first with a warning, then a complaint. If the same individuals in the same house have a party on a Saturday, even after responding on a Friday, they have to give a warning on a Saturday. So each incident is judged separately.
So the way to deal with this is not by removing a warning to students that they have a half an hour to quiet down, because first of all, it takes a half an hour to shut down a party if it's really big and out of hand, but you have to give them the chance to do that. The other, you know, the other thing is not to, not to take away the warning, but to change the way that the students and the towns deal together. And that's part of why we're here as members of town meeting, is because we've realized that we need to change our working relationship or our relationship with existing, and doing something like this, you know, hitting students in their lifestyle for $100 and then $200 and $300, what happens when students can't afford to come back to school, is not going to create that understanding that we need to all live together in this town.
Ms. Donovan, do you want to come forward? You're a registered voter of the town of Amherst? Yes.
My name is Pat Donovan and I'm from Precinct 9. I live on Butterfield Terrace. Butterfield is the short street that borders the UMass campus. On one side of the street, there's married student housing, the admissions building, and a dormitory. None of those are a problem for us. The dormitory is not a problem. On the other side of the street, we have six homeowners, and they're not a problem. The end of the street, we have four rentals. One of those houses is a major problem for us. The end of our street looks like a slum. You've all seen houses like this. There are often cars parked on the front lawn, there's broken furniture and junk in the front yard, there's cups and litter all around, especially after a party. But we've complained to everyone we can think of about this, and I guess there's nothing to be done, so we're going to have to live with it. However, we can't live with the noise. People have said, "If you don't like the noise, why do you live so close to campus?" We've lived on Butterfield Terrace for 12 years. We're one of the newest homeowners on the street. It's not been a problem in past years, nothing like it is today. It's only been the last two years when the UMass campus went dry. On many fall and spring weekends for the past two years, large parties have happened on the end of our street. Actually, I think a bar opens up on the end of our street. I'm not sure how many people are there. There are about 100 people in the yard, I don't know how many people are inside, and people are coming and going in cars and on foot all evening. We don't call the police because there's a party. We only call the police when the party gets loud. Let me give you a recent example. A week and a half ago, the weekend before last, we called the police once on Friday night, twice on Saturday night, and once on Sunday night. I thought they would be tired by Sunday night. Each time, we were sound asleep with our windows closed when we heard loud yelling and shouting from half a block away from one house. The police responded, as they always do, within 15 minutes. But the police coming to this party is a common place for this group of renters. It does not disturb them from disturbing the peace the next night or the next weekend, or maybe even that same night. In fact, I'm beginning to think they think this is a mark of a good party. We've met with the chief of police, we've met with the town manager and other town officials, we've spoken before the Select Board. Everyone has been sympathetic, but it doesn't appear that anything has been able to be done. You, the town meeting, is our last resort. We think warrant 23, the fines, would get the attention of the offenders on our street. We really hope so. And I just have one point in regard to warrant 24, the registering of kegs. One night last fall, and fall was terrible, there was, there were parties every weekend for the first six weeks. We called the police at least one or two times every weekend. My husband went down to meet the officer after he came out from quieting the house and he said, the officer said, "Well, sir, we quieted them down, but we just saw them carrying in four or five kegs, so we may have to be back." Somebody has to be made responsible, and we're really looking to you for help. Thank you for letting me speak.
Murray Eisenberg, Precinct 10. There are a couple of reasons that we need to give the police the additional flexibility that the change in the warrant article itself proposed, and I gather that we are in fact debating the main motion and not just the amendment proposed. It has been suggested that what we need to do is have reasoning and education with the town residents who are responsible for the noise. It's very difficult to reason with people while they are drunk, and unfortunately, that is one of the things that happens when the noise is created. And the second point is, I'm reminded of how very effective changes in laws can be in changing people's behavior. I think some of you are aware that this was one of the major things that happened to behavior in the South during the Civil Rights Movement. It was the change in the law and the consequent penalties that the changes in the law brought about that in fact were able, in some small measure, to change people's behavior. I hope that this additional change in the bylaw on noise will affect the same kind of change in Amherst.
Yes.
Matthew B. C. Precinct 2. I'm also a student at the university, and just to give a footnote, so I think the previous speaker, as far, you've gone to the town clerk, you've gone to whomever in the town, you haven't gone to the students. I think a working relationship between the students and the town has to occur. The main problem is, and again, the students actually don't know that there's town members around them. I think, I don't know, I didn't get a truck out of that one. What I think we have to do is, the administration has pushed the alcohol policy and the parties off campus, to be quite honest. Their strict enforcement of the alcohol laws has caused this influx of students moving off campus. Now, if, I live in the dorms, my RA is cool, but the problem is, they are depending on this job as an RA to stay in school. So what they do is they act as a police force against the parties and against noise. So that's why students want to live off campus. What has to be done is, we have to work with the Select Board and the town to get students aware that, hey, there are, there are town members around. A party smart program would do, and what that is, is that the students and the town work together and rules and tips are given to the students, making them aware that, hey, you can party, but keep the noise down, and also just, if the police come, you stop it or you just turn the noise down and everything else will, will be the parties. Basically, what I'm just trying to say is, you have to work with the students, and we are willing to work with the town, and I think that has to happen. I'm not saying it's our personal fight against the administration, but if we work together against the administration, maybe the alcohol and the off-campus parties won't occur as much. Thank you.
Brenna Kaczynski, Precinct 6, and Chair of the Planning Board.
When the planning board looked into this problem and last, I think it was last spring, brought it before you, the reg, registration agreement, this body thought that that was really too invasive of the problem. We subsequently looked at the enforcement procedures that could address these problems that you've been hearing about from the neighbors, and we felt that the noise bylaw was indeed one of those things that could be tightened up, and I think this is an excellent way to address some of the problems that the police and the neighbors are having with parties. I think it's true that students need to work with the town, but I think it would fairly suggest that houses that are repeatedly, the police are repeatedly called to and neighbors completely complain about are unaware that residents live around them. And I also think that it's important to keep in mind that I would hope that the reason you're at the university is for education and not to get drunk.
Yes. Kristi Freyder.
Yes. Cy Friedman, Precinct 10. I have two comments, one of which is what Captain Sherpa said earlier, which is a repetition of what Chief Maya said at the hearing, and I would like to dispute that with as much fervor as I can. When Fran Fortino and I were working on this, it says very clearly, "Any person or persons found violating the provisions of Section 1 of this bylaw shall be first warned in writing of said violation. The first violation of this law subsequent to such warning shall be punished by a fine of not less than $100." It does not say "subsequent to such warning, but within 24 hours." It also says, "The second violation of this law within 12 months after the first violation shall be punished by a fine of not less than $200." Now, I know students have long parties, but expecting a party of nine or 10 or 11 months, I think, is a little bit ridiculous. That was not the intention of it. When it was presented at the Select Board's hearing, Chief Maya did say that it was his interpretation, he did not get the interpretation of town council on this, and this is very frankly, one of the difficulties that we have had with the enforcement of this, that the chief has been enforcing this in a way in which the law, the bylaw was not intended. I will support the bylaw, whether my, the amendments, whether my amendment is put in or not. However, I will ask that the Select Board, however this turns out, keep an eye on this. This original bylaw was passed in 1987. In September of 1990, Chief Maya, at that public hearing, stated that they were just getting the tickets, the summons printed, that they could hand out. It took over three years, and for the first three years of this, they couldn't even enforce it because they did not have the summons printed. And I do not know at this point, I would hope that they do, that the computer system is set up so that if there is a violation against a house, they will know that when the police go there, they will be able to check and say, "This is the second time, we gave them a ticket a month ago, then we get a second one for $200." And I would ask that the Select Board stay on top of this and make sure that everything is in place by September of this year.
Yes.
Yes. Fran Fortino, Precinct 9. As Cy just mentioned, I have worked on this, briefed the town council, and it was our impression and our understanding, as Cy stated, that the interpretation of a violation was indeed "sub- 24 hours and any subsequent was to be fined." And the issue we raised about enforcement has been ongoing, it's, that is the problem. I don't know if this will correct it. I know there's the $50 non-criminal disposition possibility in place that, from what I gather, has not been implemented, and this has gone on for over three or four years. I would like to not only second what Cy said to the Select Board, but make sure that the interpretation goes through to the police department, that that's what the town meeting wanted, not every other 24 hours you get a warning, another warning. It's clear, pretty clear, ask the town council from the intent that's written into this bylaw, that subsequent violations within the next nine or 12 months are to be followed up with a fine. It is clear. I think if there's any doubt, the Select Board should look into it with the town council and get a clear ruling on it, instead of having us go around. There's been several meetings with the police department, with the police chief, where we 've heard, "We can't enforce it like this, we can't do it like this. Let's get a clear interpretation if that is indeed the case, and if so, why it can't be." I'd like to know, first of all, from the police department right now, how many citations, non-criminal dispositions you've used so far in enforcing this bylaw, since you have these tickets? And if indeed this change in the bylaws passed tonight, will you enforce it as you have it up there with $100 fines? Or will there be a warning system and the same way that it is now?
I have to remind you, once again, the questions need to be directed to the moderator. People can respond to these questions if they choose, not this panel.
I agree with you about enforcement, and we're definitely going to find out what's going on here and what we can enforce. I also want to say something to the students. If all the students were like you, we wouldn't be having this conversation. And I sincerely hope that if this vote goes the way I think it's going to go, that you will not take that personally. I think students can have parties without anybody needing to call the police. I think people can have a lot of fun without being drunk and rowdy. I was a student in this town for 10 years. I had parties. It didn't seem to bother the neighbors, they didn't have to call the police, I had a good time at my parties. I think people need a new attitude about what is a good time, and I think it would be irresponsible of either the town or the university to encourage or condone the idea that the way to have a good time is to drink too much beer and yell and shriek and use other people's yards as bathrooms and slam doors and break mailboxes and things like that. That's not having a good time, that's not being aware of who your neighbors are. Some of your neighbors are students. Some of them need to get some sleep, too. Most students work also. They don't have this kind of time to destroy property and make a lot of noise, any more than their non-student neighbors do.
Ms. Brooks.
I appreciate student involvement, and I too would like to see us work together so we could eliminate these spring conversations and fall concerns when students come back. I would like to give you a charge, is to get a copy of our noise bylaw and take it upon yourselves as a town meeting member representing the student body and inform as many people as possible that don't know that there's a community out here that exists, that we do have a noise bylaw, and we do expect the students to adhere to the bylaws that are put into place. And that's one way in which we can start bridging the gaps, because I know in the past, we have tried to get that information within, during orientation period, and we don't know if the bylaw is one that has been publicized or even put into the collegiate. So that's one way in which we can start bridging our gaps and closing those gaps and then sharing the information that we all know with each other.
Anything new to be said? Yes, Ms. Brooks.
Previous question? Second.
Question has been moved and seconded, it is not debatable, would close debate. If the debate is closed, we'll come to an immediate vote on both the motion and the amendment before you. All in favor of the motion for the previous question, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Right of order.
Yes.
Would you correct the language? Under the spell, "Ae-ue."
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. The motion you see before you is the amendment offered by Mr. Friedman. If this motion is defeated, we will come to an immediate vote on the motion without the deletion shown by the blue mark. You're right. You're right. Wait, I have, let me think about this, Ms. Campbell. This is, this is offered, I believe, as a substitute motion? Or was it offered as a deletion? I need to look at the language, excuse me. You're right, it's a deletion? So it's just the amendment? The motion is to delete the words "more than one half hour." Just to delete the words "more than one half hour." All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Now, the motion before you is as you see it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Article 24, Town Bylaws Regulating the Use and Possession of Kegs. Mr. Brooks.